We're gonna go ahead and start. Uh, Ms. Couch, you wanna do the invocation, then we do the pledge.
With ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do something a little different. Next is the chairman's report. Uh, we're gonna start having each one of the departments update us on what they're doing at this time. And the Public Works Director has volunteered to be first. Move the microphone up just a little bit. We've had some complaints that the people that's watching us live stream can't hear.
Anyway, I was saying about the paving. I've talked to them on a every few days basis. And they're, they're
They have two roads to finish, I think, in the cast where they told me.
But they'll be out any day now to start a project. Like I said, they'll continue throughout the whole duration without leaving. To do all of our, our work. Of course, the weather's, or some of our gravel roads, the weather's kinda held us back a little bit. You know, as far as with the weather, we've had to kinda change us, you know, the way we do things as far as, you know, you can't go out if it's gonna come a massive rain. And it's very what's there. So we're a little bit behind, but I think we're, I feel much better where we at far as getting back to making some on some of our gravel roads. Getting the handle back on it. We take a lot of pride in, if there's a situation, trying to address them. In the last couple of weeks, we've paid the, I mean, excuse me, we replaced a creek culvert. Worked Mr. Allenberry on that. On Agent Road, seventy-two inch, sixty-foot culvert in a creek that we had to replace due to pipe failure. But I think we had pretty quick response on that, probably getting it taken care of. Of course, just, you know, we've worked on a hundred of work orders. What we, what we call work orders is just, you know, issues that we find on our own and issues that, you know, citizens may cause about whatever, which is a normal maintenance cycle that we try to run through, you know, day to day for this business. I think we're in good shape as far as, you know, we're ready to go with Bushog this season. I think the weather's gonna help us a good bit as far as getting back to their own maintenance schedule for some of our gravel roads. But for the most part, I feel like we're in a better position than we've ever been in thanks, thanks to the board and the taxpayers. I think we're in one of the best positions I think we've ever been in personally, you know, and I've been around a while. I appreciate that, not only from the board, but from taxpayers also. I think we're doing more with lips. You know, and I know that some people don't like to hear those words when it comes to taxation, but I really think that we're doing more work than than we typically have in the past. You know, it's a process to try to get better, but, you know, I feel like we're getting better. And I think we'll continue to get better. Basically, I, you know, I see other than the normal maintenance situations we do, day in and day out.
One thing that you've left out is a, a couple of weeks ago, we got an email from the DOT that they had extra money. And Terry filled out the paperwork. Four days' time, we got extra eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars at one time. That's
Road paved?
With no match?
No match.
No match.
Will it be used this cycle or around?
It'll be used while the pavers are here this time.
And we already identified those roads that we will work on?
Probably pulled it out of those hundred work orders.
Yeah, we're gonna get Stedman Road, Monroe Mill Road, Kelly Loop, Sanders, Lake Circle, Providence. Am I leaving anything out?
All of Providence?
Yeah. And it, it will be, it's gonna cost nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do Providence, and the eight hundred and eighty-four thousand will go to that.
You just made a lot of people happy.
They did honor the price that we, that we got from the last contract. And I think anybody's aware of every time we did this thing, it's going up, so I was kinda skeptical. But them having the amount of volume that we have in the county, they honored the same price. And I think that was very big.
I think y'all have done a great job streamlining that process for paving too. I feel like we're able to go through that process pretty efficiently and get these roads approved and get them paved and going after roads that are not in complete disrepair, but on their way to it to kinda get ahead of the curve and finally feel like we're gaining some ground instead of pulling up from behind. And y'all have done a great job with that. And I know that it's a lot of legwork on you to go out and get the quotes for what you think it may cost and then, and then make it work to what the county needs. So I appreciate what y'all are doing. I see y'all's guys out all the time.
There's any, uh, issues that anybody has any concerns about Stedman Road, you know, there's some, what we call some deep patching. It's kind of a process prior to actual paving. We're out working pretty, pretty, pretty much every day on that road, trying to be ahead of the pavers. Everybody bear with us, I think the finished quality will be much better than, than normal.
That deep patching would be key, so we ain't going back and fixing a problem later.
And I'm a, I'm chairman and I've been very big on trying to do it right. Give our best ability to make the best quality roads we can. So I just, maybe covering, covering it up a little bit, you know? I just wanna make sure everybody's aware that working on Stedman Road didn't finish results, you know?
Yeah.
It'll come to be a good quality, smooth road.
Thank y'all.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. We appreciate the four-day turnaround and the approval on the AL-MIG money.
That's in addition to the AL-MIG that we got last year that we're spending this year.
We got seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Wasn't it seven sixty-four? Last year to spend in this calendar year, and we had to match it with thirty percent. And we got eight hundred and eighty-four thousand.
That we don't have to match.
That we don't have to match.
That's a million six.
And Terry, is it Providence Church and church and Spur or just Providence Church Road?
No, they were just
Just the road, okay. 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 Yeah. And Providence is a, a road that desperately, desperately needs it, you know?
This was, we keep a, a running total pretty much on what it costs to do each road and know what it would cost. You know, you name a road and Terry pretty much tell you how much it's cost. And when we got to eighty-four, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, it was in thirty thousand of Providence. So that was
That's good, good guesswork.
Yeah. And it cleared just like, and it cleared in four days. We got approval to get the check. So it worked real well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Terry.
Approval of the previous minutes, everybody's had opportunity to read the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, show right hand. Approval of the agenda. I'd like to add, uh, number, uh, item number seven, a resolution to increase hotel motel tax to eight percent.
You said eight percent?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, or no, you were just adding that?
Yeah. Need a motion to approve it is?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, show right hand. Item number one, National Telecommunications Week Proclamation. Holly, you wanna come up? John, you wanna read that?
I'm late, she's got
Holly and your people?
Yep.
All your people come up.
This one? All right, you gotta come over here. Is that everybody? All right. Well, before I read this, I appreciate the, the work that y'all do, uh, day in and day out. A lot of times, you get the, the front end of the tragedy or the event that's going on and don't, don't oftentimes get to, to know the result of it, and that's kinda what you have to take home and wonder, um, how it all kinda played out. You may, you may get that the scene's clear, but, um, y'all play a vital role when somebody calls nine-one-one, that there's somebody there on the other end that picks up. And they got a lot of good people that are, that are picking up the phone and taking those calls, and I appreciate what y'all do and, uh, the sacrifice that y'all make, uh, to do that job. It definitely doesn't go unnoticed, so thank y'all for, for everything that you do down at, down at nine-one-one. We was talking earlier, I'm sure you'll get plenty with these storms coming in, the trees falling and down power lines, and those can become monotonous, but then that one call comes in where you make all the difference, so thank y'all. Proclamation reads, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require sheriff, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of officers, firefighters, and paramedic, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the citizens who telephone the Harrelson County nine-one-one communications center. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact that our, our citizens have with emergency services. Whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety dispatchers of Harrelson County nine-one-one have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year, and therefore be it proclaimed that the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April fourteenth through April twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, to be National Telecommunications Week in Harrelson County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Okay, item number two, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Danielle, you wanna come up? Well, won't you all up?
Those of y'all that don't know, we have a few individuals from, um, Harrelson County CASA, um, and as well as DFACS. Oh, and Child Advocacy Center, excuse me. Um, I see the work that these people do firsthand every day, um, in core, and, and the, the role that they play is vital to protecting, um, a lot of the kids in our area, a lot of kids that you would probably never think are in situations that they are in. Uh, but these folks play a vital role in trying to protect them, um, and get them to, uh, better housing, better situations. So the resolution for Child Abuse Prevention Month, uh, children are key to Harrelson County's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. And while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. Whereas children have the right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow in an environment that fosters their health, growth, and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Harrelson County families by providing parents with social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, thus preventing any far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to, to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. Whereas effectively intervening in the lives of children threatened by abuse is shared responsibility. Therefore, we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are as a community extending a hand to children and families in need. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and business communities. Almost done, I promise. And whereas by providing a safe, nurturing environment for our children, free from violence, abuse, neglect, we can ensure that Georgia's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state, nation, and community. And whereas the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners with the citizens of Harrelson County in partnership with Harrelson Family Connection, Harrelson Foster Parent Association, Harrelson Pult CASA, Harrelson Department of Family and Children's Services, and other community representatives call attention to the problem of child abuse. Therefore, be resolved by the Harrelson County Board of Commissioners that April twenty-twenty-four is designated as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Harrelson County.
Thank you.
The item number three is a rezon, rezoning request. Harrelson County Tax Map zero zero nine nine dash zero zero three seven, located on Rock Mart Road. Present zoning is A dash one. Agriculture proposed zoning is R two, with a conditional use for residential home with a bakery requested by Dipper Long. This passed the zoning board, I think it was four oh, and, uh, it went through our board, it's already had, uh, uh, public hearings, and we're ready for a vote.
I'll make the motion to approve the rezoning request.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor, show right hand. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Did you bring the cup?
Yeah, I was gonna say, working.
What you said the last time.
We gotta come to the storefront, right?
Item number four is a public works request to purchase a fifty-seven-ten Massey Ferguson bushog tractor for fifty-seven-three forty-three. That's the one that Terry referred to a while ago. We got a consensus from the board at the last meeting to go ahead and buy it. It was an unvoting meeting. That's a little bigger, higher than I can okay on my own with the department head. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to purchase that tractor.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the Massey Ferguson tractor.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, show right hand. Harrelson County Veterans Association request for twenty thousand dollars in funding for the West Georgia Veterans Museum and Educational Center. Sammy, I think that's you.
We had come before you about a month ago and presented the drawings of what this, uh, building's gonna be, and of course, we told you that we were here to ask you for money, but for some reason, we forgot to ask you that night, uh, for the amount of money that we won. We followed, we let you do that and probably more than what we asked you anyway. So, two weeks ago, Tommy Patterson came back to your work session and asked you for twenty thousand dollars to go, uh, to help, um, build the West Georgia Military Museum and Educational Center. We have come a long way, in a year and a half, we so far have collected right at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is people from Carroll County, Harrelson County, Polk County. People have been, uh, very generous, businesses, individuals. We've had donations, I got one this week, ten thousand dollars from Tupelo, Mississippi. So, we, uh, given the county the opportunity to help us with this project. It is a project, uh, for veterans. If it wasn't for veterans, none of you would be here. That's a fact. And we want to preserve the history of the West Georgia area. We have probably seventy-five percent of what's going in it stored in three counties. And so when this is completed, kinda like building a house, we got the furniture ready. We got the people ready for it, as I've mentioned before. Our curator has built three of these, is in charge of one now in McDonough, Georgia, and he's worked with us for twelve years. He's laid this out, he knows where everything is going. And we just ask you for a little bit of help on behalf of all the county. Anybody have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, at the work session, um, it was stated that I was gonna look into this issue because there's a concern with the gratuities clause of the state constitution and what the county can give money to and what the county cannot give money to. And it was stated that, uh, I think Carroll County considered a similar, uh, matter. And I did inquire with Carroll County and their attorney, and the Carroll County had declined to, um, declined a similar request due to those legal considerations. And I've gotten their research from them, I have not had a chance to write it up for the, the board. So, the board may want to wait until I can get that information to you, and you can review that information.
You can have it by the next meeting, now?
Yes, yeah, I can definitely have it by the next meeting.
I need a motion to wait on the research?
I'll make a motion to table it until such time that the research can be handed to us by our attorney, and, and I appreciate him looking into that, and then we can, uh, go forward.
Second.
And a motion and a second. To table this, or until the attorney can get the, I guess, basically find out where it's legal or not.
That's great.
I need a, uh, vote. All in favor, show right hand. All any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item number six, Hotel Motel Tax Ordinance. Before you see where we are, uh, want to pass a five percent hotel motel tax. I think it's, it's three and a half percent. I don't remember exactly where it's at now. On this one. Try here, three and a half percent. That was different. When I had was three and a half. You said it on the
I don't have it with me, but it was three and a half.
Yes.
It's on three and a half.
Here it is, it's, it's three and a half will be allocated to the purpose of promoting terrorism, conventions, and trade shows within Harrelson County. And then a half, one and a half percent shall be allocated toward tourist product development, uh, purposes, including signage, county attractions, corridors, gateway improvements, signage, and any other physical improvements associated with county terrorism development purposes and any other permissible use. What this is gonna do is it'll be a five percent tax on campgrounds, uh, motels, hotels, Airbnbs. It's a, a tax that the people that come here to visit will pay. Nobody in the county will pay it. It'll be to help promote terrorism, have people come. If you like, I stated last time, if you've ever been up seventy-five, you'll see, uh, come see Carter's Field sign down below, uh, Macon. That's what this money's used for. And it'll help the Development Authority, it can be used there too.
What did I, what was the rating on, um, the length of time, it's something in about thirty days, is that correct?
Uh, it's that it can't be enacted until the next month.
Okay, but how, okay, then on the campground sites, how long
Oh.
can they stay? And are those who come to campgrounds that are on a job in the area that may be there for extended stay, is, are, are there exceptions for them?
Yes, this is for short-term rentals, it's not for permanent residents or long-term occupants.
And one thing about this, this, it's not just a tax. We have to provide nine-one-one services. We have to provide fire services, uh, police protection, or sheriff's protection to these individuals that come in to the county to spend the weekend. So, you know, they expect all that, so they need to pay for their part of it. And this is what a lot of this money's gonna be used for.
How about, and I know this is the marshal's problem, and, and it is a hard one to, to monitor, but, uh, where we have some current campgrounds that are seemingly, uh, long-stay when you look at how they have, um, fixed up their front or their camper, like they don't plan on leaving anytime soon. Will we also be getting those five, five percent on all those extended stays? I mean, it's kind of an honor system, is it not? How's that gonna? Would it, would it possibly deter some of the people who are staying for so long, that extra five percent, to do something different?
It, it very well could. The county regulates long-term stays differently than short-term stays. This, uh, tax mainly applies to short-term stays at short-term locations. Now, a lot of people, as you said, they may leave for a day and then come back or whatever to comply with the short-term stay of the, the ordinance. But yes, they'd be paying the
Their five percent?
Their five percent.
Do we know that other counties is doing this also? I know the hotel motel tax is everywhere.
Yeah, many counties and cities have enacted the hotel motel tax, and up to the eight percent.
On everything.
Yes.
Airbnbs?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, some
Not just us.
Yeah. In fact, some places are even licensing Airbnbs, VRBOs even separately. They have to pay the hotel motel tax. They have to pay the hotel motel tax. They also have to get a separate license from the county, and the counties, uh, or cities, um, regulate those due to the complaints that citizens may have due to the, you know, party houses, basically.
Yep, one-night rentals.
That's right.
Yep.
And so you can regulate those separately and have a separate licensing thing where they still have to pay the hotel motel tax, but they also have to, uh.
Have minimum stays and.
That's, you might, you might have other regulations to control them and a mechanism to pull their license if they act up on multiple occasions. You know, three strikes and we're gonna pull your Airbnb, VRBO license.
And this is five percent?
Yeah.
That's all we can do. But the next item is to, to ask legislatures to take it to eight percent. But it's gotta go through the legislature to do it. So this one is, is the five percent.
We have a motion on that one yet?
Not yet.
I'll move that we adopt the, uh, hotel motel tax ordinance.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, show right hand. Okay, as I stated earlier, item, that's a five percent. We can go to eight percent if it goes through the legislature. And item number seven is to ask the legislature to increase it to eight percent next year. So we'll already have it ready to go.
Make a move to adopt the resolution, uh, requesting an increase to eight percent.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor, show right hand. Motion carried. Public participation on non-agenda items.
Hello, good evening, you guys. Um, it's good to be here. Thank you for your time. Um, can y'all hear me pretty well? Okay. So again, my name is Brooke Robic. I'm a member of the Harrelson County GOP, and, and I'm very involved with West Georgia Right to Life. Um, we are here tonight because we would like to request that the following question, which I will read, could be added to the May twenty-first ballot for voters to vote on. We are also here because we were informed by Vaughn Gable that a resolution with our Personhood Pro-Life question has to be voted on by the Harrelson County Commissioners before it can be added to the May ballot. So here's the question. Since abortion still remains legal in Georgia, and the Georgia Department of Public Health reported that the number of abortions performed in Georgia has increased annually since two thousand nineteen, should the Constitution of Georgia be amended, adding a personhood amendment to our Georgia Constitution so that the right to life is vested in each innocent human being, inside or outside the womb, from his or her earlier, earliest biological beginning to natural death without regard to their age, race, sex, health, function, or condition of dependency? You might ask, why do we need this? Georgia seems to be a pro-life state. Well, as you guys are already celebrating, um, or, um, making awareness of Child Abuse Prevention Month, I was just thinking abortion is the ultimate in child abuse. And again, we did have a bill, HR four thirteen, the Personhood Amendment, which had not passed this past legislative session in our State House. And as we look at other states in this country, we see that Ohio hasn't tried abortion in their state constitution, and Florida, um, will actually vote on adding abortion rights in their constitution in November. So, we would, um, be naive to think that that kind of thing is not gonna come to Georgia. And you might think, oh, we're a small county. What can we do? Well, I say to that, um, Jesus's words in Luke sixteen ten. Jesus says, "He was faithful and a very little thing is faithful also in much." So I would call us to be faithful in this small thing and have our county stand for life. Again, some other quotes, the Fourteenth Amendment says that no state shall deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. Preborn children deserve equal protection. Our Declaration of Independence, "Life is an unalienable right." So, that's why we're here today to ask that our Personhood Pro-Life question will be added to the May twenty-first ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that something possible?
On another resolution or referendum issue, Vaughn had mentioned to me that, uh, I was trying to look back, but I think it was back in March was the last dead, it was a week in March was the last deadline to get anything on the May ref, or ballot, to build the ballots.
When I thought it took like sixty days.
Yeah.
There's a length of time that we've been required to get it on this May's ballot.
Yeah.
That's my understanding from the elections, not on this particular issue, but on another issue that we were discussing, yeah.
There would be no issue as far as you're concerned on getting on a November ballot?
That would seem like it would be plenty of, of time, yeah.
I'm not sure, uh, that we can put a question on the general ballot, the general election ballot.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Yeah, a lot of times they're, they are on the primary specific ballot, and they will be on the Republican or the Democrat ballot, or both ballots.
Can we check on that?
Yes, we can check on it, yeah.
When we realized, we brought it to a couple of y'all's attention, they said, well, next meet. Well, this is the next meet.
I think we had discussed that there was a deadline, though, if I recall.
We were sure.
Yeah. We'll certainly look into.
We can check into the November.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, show right hand. Where to adjourn?